You know, I'm gonna buy microphones that come on automatically when you speak because I can never remember. I know it's it's a hundred thousand dollars, but it's just zeros. Anyway, Director Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Shelly, would you lead us in the pledge, please? I need to apologize. I was just talking about dinner and this hot sauce and I it's killed what brain cells I had left. So I may need some help tonight. Tonight is a work session. And so we will not have public. Oh, we will not have a public participation tonight. There are some housekeeping rules. If you have a phone cellphone, would you please silence that for us? Do we have anybody from the news media? Either in person or online? Okay. We have two. Very important subjects that we're going to cover tonight. And this meeting is live zoomed. And tomorrow sometime it will be archived as the rest of our meetings are. So you can go back and review those meetings. I have noticed that there's a Senate bill. That's fishing its way through. Up in Salem about districts are going to be required to. Have live meetings and archive them and everything. I guess the rest of states way behind us.
Trying to catch up.
We've been doing this for a long, long time. So we're pleased that we're able to do that. So that before we get into communications to the board, I just want to tell you, we have two topics in the work session tonight. And then we're going to. Go into executive session. We have two executive session topics that we're going to discuss. The recent negotiations. And then the superintendent's evaluation will continue with that and. Then we will come back into regular session. We may have news or we may not have news. Just depends on how Jared treats us tonight. So. So that's basically what we're going to do tonight. The two topics are. Very, very important and I'm I'm looking forward to Dr. Joe Weber on talking to us about our mid-year numbers. And I'm really looking forward to Dr. To the Director and Pastor Howard Johnson's. Presentation on racism. And I know he spent a lot of work into it and. I'm looking forward to that. I hope the rest of you are too. So at this time. Communications review of agenda superintendent.
Thank you. Chair Cotton, I think, thank you for. Letting people know that Andrew is excused Director Strickland and again, we're hoping that. Director Hammerson's feeling better. We're grateful he's here tonight with us. We do have, I just want to acknowledge we've got. Some great people here with former board members here and great teachers and. We also have Terry joining us here and. Got great are some great leaders and also want to recognize we've got Ezra, one of our students here. Thank you Ezra. Great to see you. Thanks for being here with your dad. Yuri, it's good to see you. So thank you. It's a I really appreciate the board and also appreciate the community, our school community, others that come out to support the work that's so important in our community. So thank you.
Yeah. So at this time, let's move into. Oregon State assessment data for Roseburg Public Schools and. Assistant Superintendent Shoney and learning and learning, teaching and learning director, Dr. Joe Weber. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I think I'll go ahead and just set this up if I could. That's okay with you. I do want to thank before we begin, I want to make sure we get the strategic plan out there. Today and thank people who put this together. I want to just publicly thank as we get started. I'm going to start with our board for your consistency. Your expectation. And your support and ensuring that. We're designing an educational system that supports and is focused on students and on their growth. I hope we can share with you tonight some of the things that we're working towards and improvements that are happening. And there are areas where we need to continue to get better. And that's. One of the things I love about our organization that getting better is not, there's no stigma in that doesn't mean we're not good. We have great professionals that work in every building, doing great things for kids. But I do appreciate the board's interest in this. It is actually relatively uncommon. That board members look at and have an interest in this kind of data. Sometimes in the world of boards, governance becomes. The policy becomes the only thing that they are are doing. I just want to thank the board for for their focus on all students, which must include. But not exclusively include. The achievement of students. Are we moving kids forward academically? And the holistic view the board has is really important to make sure kids have the care and support they need. And those foundational things are are foundational in terms of making sure that kids are are moving academically. So thank you to the board. Also, just want to thank. Before we kick this off, Jill, Michelle and the team for helping put some of this data together and really, really thank all of our educators, our staff. Our administrators, our licensed staff, our classified staff who are professionals and work every day with our students. Whose interest every day is to ensure that the kids are successful and moving forward. I do get frustrated at a narrative around public education when people think it doesn't work that aren't involved in it. We are unique, I think, across the state. And we have lots of people calling to say, how are you doing what you're doing? I think there's lots of areas that we should be proud of and are, and there's lots of things that we're going to be doing and continue to do to get better. So hopefully tonight, I hope that you'll ask questions, that you'll be inquisitive, that you'll wonder with us. As we, as we really be transparent about where we're seeing the growth we hope for and how our. Investments line up with this plan, which is how we're organizing our budget and our professional learning. And our organization. So with that, I'll kick it over to Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you. I'm going to share a little bit about the journey that we've been on the last four years with our instruction and our instructional framework. We continue as an organization to support the goals of our strategic plan. Thank you to the board for your investment in this work. Our implementation of the five D instructional framework. Supports the middle of the strategic plan that all of our students will receive the care, support and instruction needed to graduate from high school with plans for their most successful futures. In addition, this instructional framework aligns with the four areas around the outside of our strategic plan. Including appropriate and timely instruction, but also effective operations, the safe and inclusive learning environments. And our leadership development. And our work with the five D instructional framework began four years ago as a district. We partnered with the Center for Educational Leadership at the University of Washington to support that work. We also continued the work during COVID. We did lots of. Zoom trainings and even observations and conversations, but we continued that work during the pandemic. We started with professional learning for administrators. On the five dimensions of instructional framework with our original focus being on classroom environment and culture as well as student engagement. Our administrators participated in learning walks, so went into classrooms together. To perfect to calibrate and expectations around instructions. As well as to practice giving feedback to teachers. To support teacher growth and in return and in turn, support the growth of our students. And during the second year and previous years of the implementation, instructional leadership teams were included in the training. ILTs consist of administrators, but also brought in teacher leaders from each of our schools. So each of our schools has an ILT team that attends trainings and professional learning together around the instructional framework. This year, we moved to the instructional framework. Expectations also being our teacher evaluation, our rubric for our teachers. So now the feedback that teachers are receiving is aligned to the instructional framework and the teacher evaluation rubric. They're tied together. At the beginning of this school year, Dr. Weber and I met with each of the principals to review last year's school data. So the school report cards that we had shared with you. And also discussed what was needed to be included and then continuous improvement plans. This the focus needed to be around our district focus around ELA literacy, math and graduation. Each of our principals completed goals with working with their school community. And a plan for implementing those goals for this school year. And all of those plans are aligned to our strategic plan and you as a board have seen the presentation so far from our principals. Align to their district data and what their goals and plans are as a as a school. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Weber. She is going to share with you some information about the assessments that we are using in our district.
Okay. So this is going to be a work session. So we're going to. Those are the areas you want to focus on. So in math, reading and graduation. So we're going to specifically look at some of the data in that area and those areas. They tie directly with our strategic plan, as you heard here, and they measure our growth towards those goals. I at your place and earlier this week you were sent are the this packet that has three pages of the assessments that we do in our district. We could spend a lot of time digging into every one of these, but I want you to know. That we do assess and we assess quite a bit and we assess every kid because it's important for us to know where our students are. And how they're progressing and how we're doing as a system. So specifically today, we're going to be looking at iReady data and that is a K five reading assessment we do and a K eight math assessment that we do. So that's the one that we're going to dig into more today. And there's a lot of other things on here we could look at. But if you have questions on this later, we can talk more about this one. Okay, the next slides. So before we talk about the iReady data, I'd like to talk a little bit about the different types of assessments we we do have. Um, is it not working? It's blinking. You're right. Okay, thank you. So why do we assess? We assess because we want to. We want to know that 100% of our students where they are and their skills and their knowledge. We can teach. To them better when we know where they're at. So that's first of all, every one of our kids, we need to know where they're at, whether they're starting kindergarten. Or they're starting 12th grade. We want to know where their skills are and how we can challenge them and accelerate them. We also want to ensure that every year they're growing at least a year's worth, if not more than that. So we want to measure progress along the way. So that we ensure that they're growing at least a year's worth. And then it also informs the next step for every child. We want to challenge them. We want to accelerate them. We want to support them and we want to make sure we know where they're at so that we we continue to meet their needs at that level. So. Different types of assessments. We're going to use some language and we in education, we love to use all kinds of different words. And so we're going to talk about the different types of assessments. So the first type we're going to talk about is diagnostic and this diagnostic is I'll take a first grade student who's learning to read. We're going to dig into the the reading data and identify where their skills are and maybe where they need some support. It could be in phonemic awareness. It could be in phonics. It could be an alphabetic principle, but we're going to diagnose where they are and what supports they need. So we do that in individual student level. We're going to talk about formative assessment today. This is the data that we get while we're in the process of instructing. That helps us know where they're at and how we need to to inform our next steps. So the formative assessments inform our next steps. And then there's summative assessments, which is like our state OSAS data. And that's the one that that our principals have set goals around. And that's measured at the end of the year. So we do all this teaching all along and then we get the summit to date at the end that says, how well did we do this year? So that doesn't always inform our next step, but that kind of tests how we've been doing for the year. Okay. So the next slide just shows what some of those are. So we do use program and classroom data. Maybe. We finished a unit in language arts and we use some assessments from the program to test how students are doing. We use district data dibbles, which is another word that we love acronyms that we like to use in education. It it stands for dynamic indicator of basic early literacy skills. Again, it's assessing the literacy skills of students. I ready, which we'll be looking at today, which is a program that assesses our math and our reading data. And we also have HMH, which is an in-program. Who and Mifflin. Language Arts Curriculum that we assess for middle school through seniors and how they're doing in the reading program. We also have state data in our assessment system in English, Language Arts, Math and Science. Because we have a whole lot of other things as well. All right. So let's talk about our data. So you have a sheet that. Has the data, there's three pages. That has the data on it. So if you could pull that to the front. And. The top part just reviews what I just talked about with diagnostic, formative and summative. Below that, those colors and they look similar to a stoplight. Green, we're doing pretty well and we're at grade level. We're meeting expectations. We're right where we should be. Yellow says we're approaching grade level, but we're a little bit behind when we need to slow down, be cautious and check where we're at with that. And then the red tells us that we need significant support, that we're lower. Then just a little bit behind and we need some significant support to accelerate the learning to get up to grade level material that we want. Okay. So this is the first thing we're going to pause here and you're going to tell your partner, elbow partner. So identify your elbow partner. So you two are elbow partners. So. Jared and. Okay. Rod and Howard, would you be partners? And then will you? Okay. And what I'd like you to do with your partner is talk about what each one of these colors represents. What is green? What is yellow? And what is red? Go ahead and share. All right. Go ahead and finish up your conversation. Thank you. So now with that, we're going to take a look at some data. So Michelle, would you show us the first? The next slide, the first piece of data. And this is, we're going to be looking at math first. So this area is first grades through fifth grade math. You can see first, let's look at first grade. So it's the first two columns. You can see fall where students came in. And you can see winter assessment where they're at now. You can see the same thing in grade two. On the left is the fall where they came in at the start of the year. And on the right of that, under grade two is where they are now in winter. And so on through grade five. So we got that. We're okay there. Okay, we're going to use a protocol that we use in math called notice and wonder. And so you're going to have a little bit of time to private reason to reason privately. Where you're going to look at the data and I want you to notice some things. What do you notice as you look at this? And what are you wondering as you look at this? What questions may you have? So we start with a notice. Look closely at the data and notice things and then you're going to wonder things and after a couple of minutes of looking at it privately, then you're going to be able to talk with your partner. Okay, so take a couple of minutes to look at this. Individually first. Okay. So now I'm you're able to spend a little bit of time talking with your partner. Talk about what you noticed. And what you wonder. And then we're going to use a protocol where you're going to share out with your team about one noticing and one wondering between each team. Okay. Are we ready to share some things? So does is there anybody who feels like, oh, I have one I want to share first? Okay, Rod, what'd you guys, what'd you see?
Well, what we don't notice obvious there, there was, if you're looking just at the chart, there was improvement across the board from. Winter or fall to winter.
What evidence do you have that tells us that there was improvement?
Well, there's more green. Less pink, red.
Yep, absolutely.
So that's good. And then. Look like a fourth, fifth move faster maybe. Into the green.
Okay.
And that's probably because first graders coming in. You know, even though they had kindergarten, first graders coming in. Still had their routines takes probably takes a little longer for them to get in routine and maybe we should have year round school. We just need air conditioning.
And did you have a conversation with Rod?
No.
It sounds familiar. I know. And year round school could make a difference because there is summer loss is is something that is real when students are not in school during the summer.
And understand. We're not. I I'm personally not banging up on any educators because they're working extremely hard.
They are working very hard.
Because it's so it's it's just the system. And so.
But you you are the positive as we see that what we're doing in the classroom, we do see growth.
Yeah.
And we see growth because of more green and. Less red.
So I want to get them.
Yep.
Want to give the educators to cast all the kudos.
Absolutely. This is nothing about that for sure.
Beat up for.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah. All right. And can you and Andrea add on to what Rod said?
Well, I was wondering, are. Are we comfortable or did we make a change? In our math curriculum? With these younger. That. Could. Be part of the. The number. What we're if what we're not seeing that we want to see is, are you, are you happy with the math?
Am I happy? Oh, okay, okay. I was. So what I can tell you is we did adopt iReady math three years ago. And we did hear from our K one and some of our second grade teachers that it was not enough hands-on manipulatives and there was some feedback given and this year. There were significant changes over the summer to the curriculum and it has changed quite a bit for those students. And so. What I would tell you a couple of years ago, I don't know if I would have been satisfied with it, but what I'm seeing right now is much more developmentally appropriate. Math curriculum that's meeting their needs. So I'm anxious to see how that impacts their learning and the teachers are working very hard. To learn the new materials and to help the students use all those hands-on manipulatives during the math instruction.
Has that been? Quite a problem for them to get used to?
I don't know if it's a problem. I'm going to say they're working really, they're working really hard at. They wanted the manipulatives because that was the students. At when you're in first grade, when you're six, you still need to count sometimes one to one. You need to see things together. You need to visualize and hold the shapes. And so they needed that. They wanted that.
Right.
But in some ways, it feels like a new curriculum to them this year. So they need some support and some time as they're implementing that new curriculum.
But in the higher, the fourth and fifth grade levels.
Yes. Um, I I think we are seeing the material is good. And we continue to work on our instructional practices and how we use those programs, which is really important, the way we ask questions. The way we have students talk about math, the the way we give the task to the students to ensure that they're at the right rigor. They, the program gives us more material than we need in a day. So the teachers have to look at that and decide which one of these is the richest task for our students and which one is going to give us. What we want them to discuss and the teachers are working very hard at that. So lots of professional learning around that and time for them as grade level teams to analyze those tasks.
And they do that as a team.
They do that as a team in the building. Yes, yeah.
Yep. I also wanted to add that the state now for our OSAS assessments, so those happen in third through eighth grade and then at 11th grade. Now all students can use manipulatives. It doesn't matter what the grade level is, but you can use manipulatives on the assessment. During the test. And so that really needs to mirror what's happening in the classrooms. That's one of the requirements. So. Our students are using the manipulatives and then they're able to utilize them on the state assessments.
And it isn't just Kinder and first that are using those. We have, we brought lots of them for the middle school curriculum this year. And I know in high school they use algebra tiles still, so we all need to to see the math happening in front of us. Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking at it. I like to see all the yellow in the one through five. Yellow and green that and that's that's great. And again, improvement, just like they were saying from. Fall to winter. The one, the thing that really concerns me is six through eight.
Okay.
Where. You know, almost half of our students at all three of those levels, almost half. Are two or three grades behind and that and I don't understand it. I know that. That, oh yeah, the rest of state's the same way, but I don't really care about the rest of state. I just care about our community here. So. And I know we're all working hard to do that. And with our strategic plan, I know that's eventually going to improve, but it's just. It just really kind of it's it's disheartening to see the the numbers.
So you want to know the six through eight, so he.
You know, and what I like to see maybe next year. Is to see, you know, there's fall and winter, but I like to see fall to see our next fall is. Improving on this the past winter.
So one of the things that I want to share is that this, this is the first year of a new adoption for math program at our middle school level. And we're seeing really good results from that and the tasks are are worthwhile. This, the. The professional learning is going into that, the work that teachers are doing around that. So I think you are going to see that continued growth in that area. And when you, you can't see it based on the colors. But even within each of those bands, a student may grow from the bottom of a yellow to the top of the yellow, but they're still yellow. And that growth, we monitor every single student to see that growth happening and it is happening. But I would say if you ask. Ben, if he's okay with where these are, he would say no. And we all want to see every one of our students at green and we want to see. And we want to see all of our students being challenger appropriately, and they're working very hard. So we don't disagree with you. That's not where we want it to be, but I can tell you that we're working really hard to see those changes happen. And then we want to get everyone exactly where you want them as well.
Now, do we have access to other school districts taking the same iReady?
Yes, we do.
And so you know, do they share that information or is that, is it just depends?
I, I don't get to see individual school districts data, but we do meet with them. And then just last week was able to review with the company going through our results to look at. And they will say that there are typical, some typical things we see. One thing I can tell you that in the middle school that, that will play into this at times, and Ann and I had this conversation today, is that sometimes we see some middle school kids that just click, 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 click. And we'll see a roll or a grade reversal that their scores actually got lower. And we don't believe that that really is what happened. We know they learned, but because maybe they didn't put forth the effort for some of those scores we wonder about. So we talked to the kids about that and we ensure that when we come to the, the spring, that we will see that, that score where we want it to be.
Yeah, the, the reason why I asked about other school districts is that are there other school districts that are really doing well? And if there are, is there any way we could connect with them to find out what their best practices are? Maybe to help, you know, I mean, I don't know if they would share across school districts, but you know, I mean, to find out what they're doing different or, and what we may be missing. I, you know, again, not that we're, I mean, I'm not saying that we're not, that we're missing anything, but we, you know, there may be some things that they're doing that we're not.
And I'll talk a little bit towards the end about the work we are doing around math, and it is a K-12 workaround math, so you can see that. And I, I am in connection with other teaching and learning directors and other districts. Math is an area across the state that we're not where we want to be. And as you said, I'm not going to say it's okay because everybody's low that we want to be low, but we do see it's an area that we haven't figured out exactly the answer for yet, but I'm telling you, we're not giving up on it.
Oh, good, oh, good. What, just wondering, I know, we just, do we do this with ninth, 10th and 11th same?
Not iReady.
It's a different.
Yes, so.
Are we going to see any of that?
Not today because I didn't want to overwhelm you with too much data. And if you let me go, we could be here eight hours talking about data, so I tried to simplify it down.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I would just mention, I think, one of the things I think that's really worth mentioning to the board is that, I mean, this is a, this, I don't want to, I want to make sure the conversation, the context is right because we're, we're talking about data, but these are students we're talking about, right? But pedagogically, like from a teaching and learning standpoint, if we think about teachers, if you, when you have a stratification like this, this could be represented potentially in a classroom. And so if we think about like care, which we've entered caring that investment that we make with our kinders into first grading, carrying those gains with us. One thing that's interesting that I think about this is I think about like sixth grade math teacher, for example, right? That you're likely to have a wide range of students who are above grade level, at grade level and significantly below grade level, potentially in a classroom, sixth grade, of students that aren't really sure the concept of a fraction or the dot between the two numbers. And so I just think part of, part of our key expectation is that we're moving outcomes forward for students. But I do want to indicate, I mean, this, first of all, say the great work that's happening to make the improvement, but also acknowledge that from a teaching and learning perspective, this is a challenge. The challenge when you get a group of students in math with a content standard you need to make, where some students are well beyond that and some students maybe conceptually aren't sure of what the concept means. And so I think this idea of differentiation is, is something that I think our educators work on all the time, which is, you know, how do you differentiate for what can be five, maybe six years in a classroom of difference in, say, math learning? And so just gratitude for the educators that work every day to plan and think about how to engage students that are at the range, maybe of, you know, multiple grade levels behind, so.
I just have one question, one comment, so we can move on. I have to apologize because I was just focusing in on one through five.
That's where we were, right, right. We were, but I wanted to address Mr. Leonis.
Yeah, and, no, no, no. So I'm glad you brought, brought that up. So my question is, and I'm never one to make excuses, and nobody in this room is going to make excuses, but I'm thinking we're taking fifth grader. We, we talk about first graders are coming in and they're having to learn routines and everything. And I'm thinking about, oh my gosh, sixth graders moving to middle school. What a, what a, I mean, what a shock. And, and I'm sure that's got some type of positive negative thing on these math type things. Because I looked at fifth grade, you know, and I know it's different math and that type stuff, but I'm looking at fifth grade. And, you know, in the, in the winter, they're at 34% are in the green. And I'm thinking, well, shouldn't that carry on a little bit into the fall when they go to sixth grade, but there's, there's kind of a drop. So I think part of that is transitioning. Transition. You have to be careful using the word transitioning at this point in, but moving to a, a new grade level. And a new school, new building.
Routines, yes.
So, so I, I see the improvement and that's, you know, but.
One of the things that, as Jared talked about, that, that we have students that may be in a second grade level of math and kids who may be to 10th grade level math in the same sixth grade classroom. And we are finding curriculum and teachers are working to ensure every student in that classroom has access to that math. And so you can imagine the wide variety and knowing where the standard is and how they ensure that every kid has access to that and is a part of that class and keeping them engaged. So it is, that's work we're doing and we think very deeply about that as we move forward. So there's a lot of factors in this that, that play into what this data is. And if the answer was easy and we knew what one thing we needed to do, I can guarantee you, we all would be doing it. It's not from lack of effort. It's not from lack of professional learning. It's not from research-based curriculum. We're doing all those things and we're going to continue to work and some of it just takes time. This is the sixth year, seventh year of school, if we're talking about sixth graders. And so it isn't something that happened a couple of months ago. These are things that we have to really dig into and think deeply about. And I am very proud of our teachers and how hard they're working and they don't let any kid miss the instruction and not engage in the learning, so. And math is, math is something we continue to work at, and I'll talk more about that. So let's go ahead and move on to reading data. So you're going to see the same thing. You're going to see the colors that are there. You're going to see the different grade levels. You're going to see the fall to winter. So we're going to use, I'd like you to take this a little bit of time and again, talk with your partner about what you notice and what you wonder from this data, and then maybe what's similar and different from what we saw with math. All right, so wrap up your conversations and be ready to think about what you want to share.
We're ready to share.
Rod's excited.
So I'm going to go ahead.
Okay, please start.
What the heck's going on in third grade?
I know, pretty impressive, huh?
That is very impressive. One thing we, we need to hit upon one more time is that this is all of our students. Everybody, we're not manipulating the numbers by pulling certain students out and things. These, this is all of our kiddos.
Every student.
That is in this information.
Every student. And it's not just ones that started in the fall and were still with us in the winter. It's not, it's, a student could have shown up two days ago and they're still in this state.
So, so I, third grade, hopefully you can tell us what's going on, going on there, but improvement across. I, you know, that's, I'm looking forward to.
And you see there, there's improvement again because there's more green and red, less red, right, across the board? Okay. Andrew, what did you and Ann talk about?
We were knowing the significance of grade three and just kind of what, you know, I, I'm focusing on the red. And so I'm looking at grade three, you know, it starts out at 14%, goes down to 8% and then it pops up to 21%, you know, and then down to 12. So it's just kind of what is going on.
And some of this, we talked again about summer learning loss and we know that reading, you get better at reading by doing what? Reading. And so in the summer, if you continue to read, if your nose is in a book and you're practicing that, you're going to see those continued gains by reading, increase in vocabulary, increase in your speed of reading, that will continue to grow. We see that students who are engaged in that during the summer come back about the same as they were when they left, and that's what we hope to see. But we do see a summer learning loss. And as you know, the, there is a focus on early literacy across our state, and we have received a grant that will help with our early literacy work. And one of the things we're going to have is a summer school. And it is focused on literacy and it will be for all elementary kids and early literacy. That is going to do everything we can to not only ensure they don't lose things over the summer, but our goal is to increase the student skills and come in even stronger the next school year. So it's target for students who are below the green and that can receive that additional support so they come in even stronger by the, the start of the next year. So I not only hope that we see those numbers stay there, but we want to see them maybe even better when they start in the fall because of that work we're going to do. Reading is something in K one, there's a lot of foundational skills that are being built. So as I talked about phonics and understanding what letter sounds there, they are. We have students come in that in kindergarten, they may not know what the front and the back of a book is or that the words on the page mean something. And so even that print concepts are things we have to teach in kindergarten. Coming into first grade, we're starting to put those words together, we're adding sentences. So there's a lot of that that's happening in first and into second grade. Once we hit that end of second grade is really when we see that we're reading for increasing vocabulary, for comprehension, for understanding. And that changes the, the purpose and the way that we, we instruct around reading. So some of that's where you're going to see some changes here as well. Okay, and then let's go ahead. Any other comments on that that you or questions you have around reading? Yes, Howard?
Yeah, I have one dumb question. Do you notice any difference in the reading skill from people who are reading paper versus reading a computer screen?
And we do both, and we do have books in the hands of our kids. So in, there's a time of independent reading in our elementary classrooms every single day where they get to choose books that they want to read and they are reading on that. So we make sure that there are print. There, they do have curriculum that's online and they are reading what's there. But I know that our teachers don't want it to be just on the computer. So have I studied the, the difference? No, but I can assure you that we think it's important to have the books in their hands.
And I could have the throw up.
Yeah.
Turning a page.
Trying to, I've got on the computer.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, we will move on to On Track for Graduation. And one of the goals that has been set for us is, is to continue to increase the graduation rate. What does On Track for Graduation mean? It is a focus on our ninth grade students and we want them to earn six or more credits by the start of their 10th grade year. So right now, where our major, this formative assessment is looking at the first semester of ninth grade and we want them to have at least three credits. So you can see this graph just shows the connection between the ninth grade year and the graduation rate. The orange line is where our ninth grade year track is, and that big drop was because of what? The pandemic. And so we had a big drop in that year. And then you can see how the black line, which is the graduation rate mirrors that. So if you'll show the next slide, please. We're going to now look at where our ninth grade numbers are. You can see that we were in the mid eighties in 17, 18 school year, got up into the nineties. The pandemic hit and we dropped down into the seventies and have increased slowly, 82, 85. We're at 84 right now, but we're at 84 at the end of the first semester. But we also have second semester and we also have summer school. And the students who are not on track will attend summer school and earn some of those credits back. So we, we see a growth in that area by two or three percent usually.
Oh, question. So looking at the data, where were we, if you happen to know, at this time last year? So we achieved 85%. Do you know what we were, where our numbers were?
I'm going to guess that we were around, I want to say 83. And I don't know if that's exactly accurate, and Dave, you probably don't have that from last year. You might be able to look it up. But Mr. Vickery is telling me he's shooting for 90% for this year. And so he's pretty committed to ensuring that we're going to get back up to that 90%. And that graduate, the class that had the 90% in 18, 19, their ninth grade year is a class that had 89% graduation rate. So we see that, that correlation between those two things. So if we can get this class up to near 90%, that's going to tell us that by their graduating year, we're going to see that we're back up in, and that around 90% graduation rate.
Graduation rate last year.
We're in the mid seventies, which is kind of where we were when that, those ninth graders were in that pandemic year. So there's a strong correlation in how they do in ninth grade and how they do when they graduate. And I'm going to tell you that pandemic year was disheartening because we went from the nineties down to the seventies. And that's because they weren't in school, because they need the supports, they need the connections, they need what we do for them. Our smaller learning communities, the, all the supports we have. So we're getting back. That's what I want to tell you. What was it? Eighty at this time last year? Okay. At 84 right now. Yep. Yep. Thank you. Okay. Any other, any questions on the, on track data?
This is not Phoenix.
This is just Roseburg High School.
And on track to graduate, is this regular diploma graduation?
It, it, modified. We're, we're only looking at credits earned. So at this point, it's every student at the high school, regardless of their certificate, if they're on a modified standard diploma, all of them. Every one of our kids. All right, if you'll look at the next slide, please. So what's next? What are we doing? Because we have all this. I want to let you know that we have this data and our teachers are working hard. In the area of mathematics, we have a lot of professional learning happening. Our, our principals are in leadership coaching. They go into classrooms, they're practicing feedback. So they know what to look for in the classroom around math to, to continue to increase instruction in the area of math. Our math teachers are in studio work. Principals and teacher leaders attend this. Studio means that there are live instruction happening in the classroom and teachers are there to see this happen and to talk about what they see happening. What did the students say? Why did they say that? What were they thinking? What did the teacher ask for that to occur? We break down the lessons to individual steps teachers are doing and the impact it has on student learning. It's pretty phenomenal, the way we're looking at that instruction. We also have mass sustainability, so we have professional learning where teachers and principals come in and they do continued learning and plan for professional development in our building. So every teacher is receiving professional development throughout this year in the area of math. So we can increase our instructional skills in that area. And then we have a team that's going to a state math conference here coming up soon to, to stay on the cutting edge of math instruction and how we continue to grow our practices. So a lot's happening in math. I'm going to tell you, we are thinking math all the time and to continue to improve our practices around that. In the area of ELA and reading, we have focused on our literacy. In the area of ELA and reading, we have focused on our literacy framework from the state. Our teacher leaders and our principals are breaking that down. Looking at exactly reading, all the different parts of reading. We look at the, the foundations that are there, the, the research around that, how we're approaching each of those, how it matches with our own framework. We have a literacy coach who is going into every single elementary school, providing targeted professional learning for our teachers so they can take that back and continue to improve their practice in the classroom. We have a writing focus this year where we're going to get together by grade levels across our district. So teachers are driving all over so that we all can get together in the same space to talk about writing and what's happening in writing. And that will be coming up soon. And then we continue to have curriculum training in all of our different programs, whether it's the interventions and support or our core programs to make sure we are familiar with the programs we're using and using those properly. Any questions on math or reading, professional learning? Okay. We also are working, the supports for On Track for Graduation. We have smaller learning communities in our high school that meet monthly to look at data. They, they pull kids in and celebrate with them when they're doing well. They bring them in to talk with the team about areas that they can, that they may need support or that they can help them with. We have graduation coaches that are identifying students who need additional supports. They may be enrolled in classes. They may meet with them. They may make individual plans. We have two graduation coaches who are helping with that work. The administration and the councils are meeting one-on-one with students who are, have multiple Fs and that we got to figure this out because we're not okay with students who have multiple Fs. How are we making sure they're earning those credits to move forward? Again, individual plans with these teams. We had a ninth grade cafe in the fall and we're going to do another one in the spring where every single ninth grade met with an adult and questions were asked about their experience, where they feel successful, what supports they need. So every voice of every ninth grader was heard at the high school. And then we also have a ninth grade success team that's looking at our system and our ninth grade data and monitoring where the ups and downs are occurring and what supports we can put in as the entire ninth grade to ensure that we don't see this dip that we continue growing in our credits that are earned. And then there's summer school I should put in there too. I missed that one, Dave. And then we also have the five D work that Michelle talked about, which is the five dimensions of teaching and learning. It's an instructional framework that is research-based and it tells us what are the most effective practices that we use in the classroom for student learning. As Jared mentioned too, we have these instructional leadership teams that are meeting three times per year as the entire district. So we can grow in our skills and our plans around each school. And each school is also hosting learning walks where we're going into the school, into classrooms as teams to provide feedback to the school on their work they're doing with instruction. And that's happening in every one of our schools. And the continuous improvement plans also are built by the schools that specifically outline where their data is, where their goals are and what steps we're taking to meet their individual goals. And I just, I'm meeting with principals right now to kind of check in where their mid-year is, what things have happened, where their data matches, what they thought, what adjustments they're going to make. So a lot is happening.
Question on, on the On Track graduation, graduation coaches, who, not names, but who are they? Are they teachers? Are they, are they the counselors?
They.
Are they especially trained teachers or?
They are teachers. And they are, they were classroom teachers and now they have time set aside where they do teach some classrooms called, or classes called continuing progress where they support students who need that. And they have some other times where they're calling students in to help create their plans to support them. They may call them to say, we need you to get to school because your attendance is poor. But they are, they were classroom teachers that are now working in that capacity.
So are there other coaches that are involved in encouraging or sharing with students next steps after graduation?
So that is our, we have a college and, so we have counselors. So we have academic counselors who do some of that work. And then we always have, we also have a college and career center that there's a counselor who specifically does that work as well. We also have advisories and so students meet with the teachers on an ongoing basis, weekly, to identify areas that they want in the future and are with that same teacher throughout four years.
And it, that wouldn't just be for college, that would be for maybe, you know, military or vocational?
Yes. And so a college and career center hits all of those. So it is military, it is workforce, it is college. And it is a two-year college or a four-year college. It is Harvard, it is UCC, it is all kinds of whatever the student needs. We want them. And we do ensure that every student has a plan before they leave our school.
Derek Coloney, just remember, we've got great partnerships forming in our community where our kids are have, you know, I was at RRP this week with a couple of people. They're super interested in multiple pathways. We've got advanced manufacturing, advanced healthcare, and that's, we're building those in a pretty unique way here. So our kids can get right into industry.
That's a whole nother area we could spend a lot.
Another work session. That's right.
Yeah. So I think to sum it all up, I can tell you that the center of the strategic plan is our goal. We're working very hard to ensure that every one of our students has the care, the support and the instruction that they need to graduate with plans for their most successful futures. And the teachers, the leaders, the people in, in this school community are working very, very hard to ensure that every one of our students has a plan for when they graduate from high school. And it starts in pre-K when they, when they are in our system and we're with them every step along the way. So where the data, it will never be satisfied until every one of those kids are green. We're going to continue working to improve those. Thank you.
Okay. Questions for Jill?
Great job, Jill. Thank you.
I would like to thank Michelle and Jill for putting this presentation together. Especially happy that you didn't manipulate the numbers. And I think that's, and I'm not saying that you would have, but we've seen it throughout the state and things. You know, you had a really good question. What, what other districts are doing? I'm kind of the philosophy, just me, that I don't really care. I'm, my, my concern is our district, because I know that we're not manipulating the numbers and it's important. I want to ask the three guys, four guys out there, but you know, we're not supposed to have public participation, but think about this, don't answer it. What would you like? Is, is there, is there something specific that would even enhance what central offices happen to folks without, in the schools or something? One thing that would really, think would really help make a difference. Don't answer tonight, but you know, I'm curious. You're right. Just because you're boss next to me, but think about it. I mean, if there's something, let them know. Not the board, but let, let them know. Cause we're all in this together, right? And I know how hard you and your classroom teachers and all the instructional aides and our central office staff are working. And a lot of it has to do with strat plan that we're really, you know, following. And we'll get there. We're going to get there. And one other quick question, when are we going to start, stop talking about COVID? When, when, when is going to be that magical year? Do you have two years from now, three years from now, a year?
I would say it's, I'm not hearing a lot. The only time I hear it is like when we see the dip in the data that was real strong, like this chart I showed you past that. I really don't think it's something we talk a lot about in the school system. We are just focused on the kids and getting them through. So we don't, we don't talk about it much anymore.
Okay.
And then Jerk on of you, just one second. I did throw, I was thinking about this statement that I sometimes use and I just want to say thank you to Jill, Michelle and our staff and doing a great job with this in the board, but, but this is hopefully, I mean, this, I talk about this often. We can't hope it gets better. Hope is a terrible strategy. It's a great characteristic in people. But it's a strategy. It's, it's terrible. And so thank you for designing a culture where it's okay to look at data. It's okay to improve. It's okay to acknowledge that a student's behind. And then our effort is to make sure we're working our tails off to make sure we have the right diagnosis for that kid and the right, quote unquote, medicine for that kid. What's the plan to get them on track? So thank you again. I, sometimes I hear schools, not in our district, talk about the fact, we're just going to hope it goes well. And I'm glad to work in a place that we don't believe that hope is a strategy that, that will work long-term. So, Joe.
Thank you. I'm going to take the liberty and take a five-minute break. And then we're going to come back and we're going to listen to, everybody have open ears. We have a pretty important presentation that's going to be made. So let's stick to five minutes. We'll be back at seven minutes after, or five minutes after seven.
And so especially how you can see on the. But they they. And so they. No, no, um, but anyway, came with a different. Oh, I don't, I don't.
Grand anxiety.
Yeah. The email. But I. So recently. So you go. Okay, that's because we have. So I feel. And so. You know, even if.
Yeah, she got out of the room.
Right, she go, you can't, yeah, you can't drive right out.
And so I. Friday. That's right. So anyway.
Next.
So I said. All something else.
We all know.
There.
Okay, right.
Is this cause I can't have. Make some.
So at this time, are we all back? Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Vice Chair Reverend Howard Johnson. And he's got my four. It's on yours.
Thank you, Chair Cotton, and thank you Superintendent Jared. To my co-directors and those that are present. I'd like to start out with a disclaimer. The opinions you're about to hear are mine. They do not represent the board. The opinions you hear are mine. They don't represent the church that I have been the pastor of for thirty-five years. It has been the accumulation of my eighty-three years of life in this United States that I bring to you some ideas and some thoughts. My purpose this afternoon is to make you aware of some cultural differences between Euro-Americans and Black Americans. Some of you may have heard over the course of time that Black Americans always tell their children a list of things to do and don't do. If you haven't heard them, let me share them with you. I call them no-nos for Black Americans. I want to pause for just a quick second and honor my wife that's been here with me. If I live right and keep my nose clean, April first will be forty-eight years. Forty-eight years. First, let me share with you some no-nos for Blacks. No matter how angry you get, we must remain calm. If you raise your voice even a little bit, regardless of what you say or how you say it, you are instantly labeled as an angry Black person and judged wrongly, even if you're right. Two. My mother taught me to always ask for a bag and a receipt, no matter how small the purchase, because you walk out the door, they'll accuse you of stealing. When I buy a newspaper, Fred Meyer, I ask the lady for the receipt because when I go to the counter, somebody's gonna ask me. Three. As a Black person living in a predominantly white area, I make a point of approaching staff first in stores when I walk in. And I ask an innocent question in a friendly, high-pitched voice, even if I don't don't need anything, and they seem to feel safer with me around, and they don't follow me if I do that first. Four. As a Black person, I usually keep my college logo jacket in my car. So if I have to go to the emergency room, I always tell the attendant, I went to school on an academic scholarship, not athletic, and I get better treatment. I am from Oklahoma. At one time, there were fifty-seven cities in Oklahoma. They were all Black. There are now nine. I grew up in one of them where it says, no whites after dark. Also, Roseburg, if you don't know it, has had a history when people coming north going south never get off the freeway in Roseburg to buy gas. It's not a safe place for Black Americans. So I fill up in Eugene and fill up in Grand Pass. Six. I am a Black American relatively new to a white neighborhood. And when I walk for exercise, I always walk in the middle of the street, not too close to the houses on either side. I wear reflective gear, and I avoid staring too closely at any of the houses because people will call and say, I got a stranger in my neighborhood, and the police show up. I did that the other day, and Roseburg had a fit. It was a white guy walking in my neighborhood. They didn't know what to do. Number seven. I was taught to be an overachiever because no one expects a Black person to be smart or well-spoken. I'm not expected to have a voice in anything, and there are many people around me who are shocked and astounded when I can verbalize my thoughts and opinions in multiple-syllable words. Eight. As a Black American, my father taught me when being pulled over by the police, put your insurance and registration card out of the glove box and keep it ready on your seat. That way, you don't have to reach for the glove box when the police are standing at your window. Nine. Never put your hands in your pocket while walking around the store. If you do not want to give a sales clerk a reason to follow you, they will call the police to always keep your hands visible. Number ten. Every Black man should never get on an elevator when there is a white woman alone on that elevator. Those of you may not remember Memorial Day, nineteen twenty-one, two Black Americans that did not get off an elevator in Tulsa, Oklahoma. And that weekend, three hundred and thirty Black Americans were lynched. An entire Greenwood community of Tulsa was destroyed. It was not recorded in history, and we can't teach it in the history books. But my auntie married a young man whose father was one of the, owned one of the stores that was vandalized in nineteen twenty-two. I have a daughter. She's mixed between my wife and I. And she always has to remember which parent she's with. Because when she's with her mother, they treat her like she's a white girl. And when she's with me, they treat her like a black girl. She has to remember that. Twelve. No matter how cold or windy it gets outside, a Black person should never wear a hoodie and keep it off your head and off your earbud, and so people can see your head and your whole, whole, whole body. Thirteen. As a Black man, you must censor the music that you listen to so that no one will judge you as a thug. In case you haven't played, listened to the news lately, a TV announcer called Richard Sherman, who played for the Seattle Seahawks and the Seattle, Tampa City Forty-Niners, a thug. He has a degree in civil engineering from Stanford. I like to be a thug. Fifteen. As a Black man and as a white woman in line, stand back far enough so that you cannot touch her by mistake or be accused of touching her. See, from far away back. Fifteen, as a Black person when shopping, never tell the clerk, I'm just looking. Nothing greater would get them to follow you around, so I always ask for something to put them at ease. My favorite ploy is that I just heard your store has a shopathon contest, and whoever finds a coupon gets fifty dollars. And I use that, and I go walking around, the police follow me. As a Black man, when I dress code says business casual, I wear a full business attire. And when I do, I get better eye contact, more head nodding, and more enthusiasm when I'm talking to people. Number seventeen. Never let your Black children play with guns, whether it's fake or otherwise. As a Black man, I received different medical treatment. There's a ethics committee at Mercy Hospital, and one of them, they judge the color of your skin and your ability to pay before they treat you. As a Black man, white people expect me, expect me to apologize regardless of who's at fault. As a Black man, I'm always asked, where did you learn that and what did you do to get this job? They walked into D.R. Johnson Lumber, Vice President of Uncoa Bank, and asked me point-blank, what did you do to become corporate controller at this company? Twenty-one. I've gone through six races in my lifetime. I'm eighty-three. I started out as being colored. Then I became a Negro. Then I became a nigger. Then I became Afro-American. Then I became Black American. And then I've become now a person of color. It must be hard for you, you are American, to figure out which one to use. Me, I prefer to be called a Black American. My four parents were here when your four parents showed up. You don't have this problem, but I did. When my children were growing up, I had a very challenging time in buying the right color clothes for them to wear. Wrong color, gang-related. Now I'm going to tell you something shocking. Don't want to offend anybody. When you go to Portland and you see Beaver orange, they're not Oregon State Beaver fans. They are a member of the most predominant bad gang in Portland. That's their favorite color, orange. We have six gangs in the city of Roseburg, active, functioning every day. The trend has been a spike in, instance, in the schoolroom. And so the boy said, would you come and talk to me a little bit about it? Now I'm going to tell you some things that you may not think is important, but to me, they're acts of racism. When I hear you say, it's not my job to fix racism because I'm not racist, those go. When you tell me you don't see color, you gotta see color. Three. When I hear someone say, you don't need to worry about the police if you're not doing anything wrong. I want to tell you personally, July the seventh, nineteen eighty-nine, I got pulled over by Roseburg Police Officers while riding my motorcycle while being Black in the city of Roseburg. We have become professional friends since then. But he told me point-blank, I haven't seen a Black guy in Roseburg riding a motorcycle. Who are you? Number four. If I hear someone say, I don't want to post anything about racism on social media because I'm scared of the backlash. It gets my attention. Number five. Someone says, I don't have white privilege. Number six. I'm not sure when I should discuss race with my children about racism. Number seven, and I'll get you on this one every time. I have Black friends. I had a lady tell me who, husband is a pastor of a church. We have four Black boys come to church on Sunday. And I says, and I had four white boys come to mine. She said, why'd you tell me that? I said, why'd you tell me about the boys coming to your church? What color did they make? Were they sinners? No. Number eight. When a white person asks a Black person like me if I know Person A only because the other person that they're asking about is Black. Newsflash, we don't know every Black American in the city of Roseburg. Unless we have something in common. We play golf, we preach, you get involved in social activities, I may know them. But just because they're Black, I don't know them. I will tell you this, though. When I moved to Roseburg in nineteen eighty-nine, there were five Black Americans in the city of Roseburg. That was number six. Four months later, three of them got run out of town. I'm still here. Roseburg is my home. I made a choice. This is the one that I want to kind of get you thinking about. Black Americans see racism with the speed of turning on a light. White people see racism as slow as molasses is poured out of a jar in the middle of the winter. My wife and I had many discussions over the same incident over the years. I see something. I said, you see that racist act? She said, what are you talking about? And we have a discussion. Our discussion would lead us to have a better understanding, and that's what we need to do. I was going to give you a chitlin test, and you'll sit in front of your desk. We measure intelligence today, and we forget intelligence is what people are exposed to, not what they're capable of learning. This chitlin test was developed in nineteen seventy-one. I know, it's a long time ago. But one of the questions was, do you know who Bo Diddley is? One of the questions was, how long does it take to cook cheap chitlins? How many in your room know what a chitlin is? None of you know what a chitlin is? I don't see any hands. You want me to tell you what a chitlin is? It's the small intestine of a pig. And if they're cheap, it takes forty-two hours to cook them. They look just like pasta. And you've heard the expression eating high on the hog? That's the expression, because normally a white American would eat the prime rib and the ham hock and this and that. And a Black American would take the pig ear, the pig feet, and the chitlins. The United States was Abraham Lincoln freed the slaves January one, eighteen sixty-three. You knew what happened on January second, eighteen sixty-three? The Ku Klux Klan was born. That was their original starting date. There's a member of the church where I pastor that has shared many times that in the early sixties, late seventies, the Klan walked in full regalia gear down Jackson Street. This has been a rough town, but it's my home. The next question that I want, I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to tell you where it came from. My brother-in-law, Dr. Loveless Benjamin Livingston, got his PhD in Black psychiatry. He, at the time of his death, was the head of psychiatry at the University of California, Riverside. He was on the contract with the United States Air Force to go throughout all the Air Force bases on the Pacific Theater and give lectures to young white officers who would be in command of older Black enlisted men. It was a difficult task for him. So the question that he developed was, when did you discover you were white? I'm going to wait to hear some answers. When did you discover you were white? Anybody willing to give me a shot?
I'm white.
Huh?
Define white.
You are American, privilege. Don't have to answer for certain things. Whatever you think white is. Not my opinion of white, but what you think is white. Have you ever been charged a higher interest rate because you're white? Have you ever been denied a home because you're white? Have you ever been worried about being able to get admitted to a college because you're white? Have you ever worried about buying a car because you're white? Yeah, okay. I'll go along with that. Go on. Any other one?
Well, when I was born and growing up, I grew up on a military base, and there were all colors there. And I didn't necessarily, I guess, just that as a kid, just realizing there were people of different color and just realizing, mine was white, but for me, that was my story. But I've not experienced any of the things that you're talking about other than when we did move to Oregon. I was Portuguese and very dark, and I was called the N-word, you know? And in my innocence, didn't know that it was bad. I just kind of thought, oh, I think that's bad, but just kept on going anyway.
Yeah. And the other?
For me, when I was in junior high school, that's when I, when I, oh. When I was in junior high school, there was a lot of Latinos gangs, and I had a group of them that put me up against the fence because I was white. And the biggest Black kid in the school stood between us.
Okay.
You know, and he protected me. So I realized, well, wait a second, okay. And I, it confused me. I'm thinking, okay, well, he's, he's, he's taking my side. But that was my first experience with being white.
Anybody else willing to share?
Can you guys hear me? So I mean, Howard probably knows I've, I've talked to him about it before, but for me, it was in elementary school. I mean, it, it sounds crazy, but I was a minority in elementary school. So I was very, very well aware of my complexion on the playground at George Washington Elementary School. And I, I was involved in a lot of fights. Well, breaking up fights.
Ninety to ninety-five percent Black Americans can tell you when they discovered that they were Black. I'll give you mine personally. September one, nineteen forty-seven. Charles McClintock, a white kid living across the street from my parents, informed me that going to school tomorrow, I was going to go to that nigger's school. And I ran into the house telling my mother, I'm a nigger, I'm a nigger, I'm a nigger, I'm a nigger, I'm a nigger. And I got the lesson of my life that has lasted all my lifetime. I remember his name, I remember the incident. And I've made one choice in my life. If I can make a difference to make this world better, give me my shot. If I can make a difference in how you see yourself, to improve you, give me a shot. If I can see a difference in how we can live together. My favorite state acronym is I-W-W-C-W. In what way can we solve a problem? We have a problem we need to be addressed. I have some suggestions for the school board, and here they are. I think every site has a safety committee. We should have an ethics committee. Two students, two parents, one administrator to investigate every case of sexual harassment, racial harassment, gender harassment, economic harassment. You are greedy a kid, your mom and dad are renters. We treat them different. Then have that committee respond back to the principal of the site admin. to the principal of the site administrator for follow-up. We have policies in the school board and there's a copy of those policies. Chelsea was very kind to gather those policies and put them on your desk. We just need to follow them and enact them and encourage them. We need to treat racism like a heart attack. If it's not treated, the patient will die. I'm sure Dr. Webber can tell me some numbers that I'm not aware of. The demographics of our school system. The day we stop keeping those demographics, that's the day we will stop racism. This country was made great. This country was made great by the genocides of Indians and the enslavement of blacks. One of the people we celebrate black history made a statement that a black American's future is in three boxes. The election box, the jury box, and the cartridge box. If we start conversations where we can take off each other's glasses, take off our ego and say, what can we do to make sure that every student receives the care, the support and the instruction needed to graduate from high school in the city of Roseburg? We as a board, we as a community should take every effort to do that. That's not an idle statement. That's a positive growth statement to ensure that every student, not one that we pick and choose, every student that walks into our umbrella gets covered with the same coverage equally without fault. It's our goal. We don't want to say graduate ten percent of our student. We want to graduate eighty percent of our student. And I noticed that Dr. Webber and his sistership never said whether they're Latino, whether they're Euro-American, whether they're black Americans. They said students. That was the key word. I picked up on that word, student. And that's what I feel personally. I want to have every kid that comes to Roseburg to walk away from Roseburg saying that I have received the best quality, care, support and instruction possible. No matter where they go, they can hang a hat and say, I'm from Roseburg and not be ashamed of it. I don't know whether these things I've shared with you have hurt your interests, but I hope it has. And I want to give you a closing thought. When in doubt, reach out a hand and shake it. When in doubt, smile. When in doubt, don't worry about the repercussions. Let's just talk. If you're fearful about repercussions, we never meet anybody. I have taken to my advantage two things since I've been in Roseburg. One, being a black American, there was very few of me, people would see me and they would look at me and they would wonder who am I? And I walk up to them and say, hi, I'm Reverend Johnson. Let me tell you about Jesus. I don't want to talk about religion, but why are you looking at me? Okay. And I use it as a door. I think God got a sense of humor to send me to Roseburg and I'm going to keep him laughing, God, that is. You are my family. You are my community. I made a choice. My children didn't have a choice. I brought them here against their will. But we had a choice. My wife and I are blessed to be living in the city of Roseburg and I've been here since July first nineteen eighty nine. My home. Thank you for being in love with me. I'm done.
Can I just, yeah, just a second? I, hang on just a second. If you would, no. I've got, I want to read something into the record and then I'll open it up. If you would allow me to. On December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, we heard from two families whose children were who were in, who came across and were treated really very, very poorly, of bias and racism in our district. It can't be easy for families to approach a school board to report this kind of painful experience. It's equally as hard for board and district to hear and to acknowledge it. Speakers asked the board to learn more about what was going on and how to confront it on a district level so that children, all children can feel safe in our schools. Our strap plan tasks us with, our school environments will ensure everyone, every child, staff member, visitor feels safe, seen, heard and respected. My dear friend, Vice Chair Reverend Johnson, agreed and took on the initial steps in addressing this unacceptable situation in our schools. Over the years, and many of you know this and many of you do not know, he has been asked to present to various groups to help them understand the impact that words, behaviors and actions have on others. Yes, man. Preparing information to share with us, which she did today for a better understanding. And again, this is only the first step in addressing bias and racism in our district. It definitely will not be the last. It's our sincere appreciation of Reverend Johnson's willingness to venture into what many consider to be uncomfortable territory. We also appreciate your willingness to listen to one with an open heart and open mind, which you all did. It will not stop here tonight. We should anticipate that Reverend Johnson will be looking to his colleagues for input on the next steps following his presentation. So please give that some thought. And we will move forward. We will continue. I still cannot answer the question. But when I realized I was white. But I will get there. And it's very touching. I appreciate it. So that is the information that I might enter into the record.
Okay. Howard, thank you. I just wanted to read, read the, the policy. So that we all reminded, I don't know if it, I mean, it's already on paper, but I like to have it in words. The district prohibits discrimination and harassment on any basis protected by law. Included, including but not limited to an individual's perceived or actual race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national or ethnic origin, marital status, age, mental or physical disabilities, pregnancy, family status, economic status or veteran status. Or because of a perceived or actual race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national or ethnic origin, marital status, age, mental or physical disabilities, pregnancy, family status, economic status or veteran status of any other persons with whom the individual associates. As a board member, I stand by that.
Oregon, Oregon has a state law, ORS one fifty-five dot oh sixty-five, that's a class B misdemeanor. You're subject to a one year in jail and twenty-five hundred dollar fine. If it's a second degree misdemeanor, it's up to one year in jail and a fine of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And if it's a class A misdemeanor, you can be fined a hundred and twenty-five thousand and then five years in jail, that's Oregon state law.
Board members, comments? Okay, I'm going to do something that I'm going to get trouble for, and I already know it, but I'm going to do it anyway because I, I can do it. Is there any comments? I said we wouldn't have public comments tonight, but is there any comments? This is your opportunity tonight. Any comments from the message you heard this evening? If not, that's fine, but I want to give you an opportunity to say anything if you'd like to. Digest it. Okay, thank you. You sure may.
Again, thank you, Howard, for sharing with that. You know, because of where the world's at now, I also think that we should be really thinking about our Jewish community this time with, with what's happening. There's obviously a lot of antisemitism going on and we need to be aware that we're not immune to that. We're in a, in a culture, in a world that's not in great shape. So you know, as a board, I hope we, you know, if that's, that kind of stuff starts happening, that we, we, we do all we can from our perspective to stop it.
Jared, did you want to say?
Okay. We do have a bias incident complaint procedure, correct? Howard had the, like the family that talked with us at that board meeting back in December. Were there, were there definitely a complaint filed and, you know, did we do what we were supposed to do on that? We did not. Was, was there something filed?
I don't know if the family filed or not. I don't even know if the sense of urgency was addressed. I do know that one of the families that showed up at our board meeting and complained is getting ready to pursue legal proceedings.
Okay, I just, I just wondered if we're, you know, if we're getting those, if we're definitely following up on any complaints that we do receive.
If, because if we receive formal complaints, we have a process that we go through to investigate them, every single one.
Okay.
Again, Director Johnson, thank you. I, I want to just express my unanimity with the board and with the comments that it is mine and I appreciate it. Met with our, our leadership team on this and I appreciate their work on this as well. It is my expectation that all students can come to school. I go back and say, our parents give us the most important thing they have after children every day. And I, I, it's my responsibility as a superintendent to ensure that this strategic plan, the vision the board has, and I share that vision as well, that all of our patrons, including particularly our students, can be welcomed into a school, into a classroom and feel welcomed and respected every day. We do fight and it's not excuse. We do fight against a world of social media and TikTok and there's lots of, there's lots of forces in the world that we need to fight against. And I would say we, I would express our unfortunate limitation to do this alone. It is a community effort. The most important lessons are taught within the walls of homes. The most important teacher is our parents and those formative years. And so I just want on the record to express our sincere desire and expectation that we address this. And also say that it will not happen independently. We will address this as a community and as families and we're looking forward to working on messaging that and inviting people in to help us become, make sure that our classrooms and quite frankly, our community is a welcoming place for everyone.
Okay, our next meeting will be a regular board meeting, the thirteenth of March at Melrose. Tour at four forty-five. I hope we get to go into the little school. Hope. We can make that happen, okay? And maybe go to school there. I don't know. And then we'll have dinner and then the meeting will be at six. Thank you for all being here tonight. I'm going to recess this meeting. And just a few minutes, the board will be going into another room to, to different executive, executive sessions. The first one will go over negotiations. And then we'll come out of that, go back in and discuss an evaluation slash yeah, your evaluation. And if we have a decision to make, we'll come back into the board room. I'm pretty sure that's going to be decision. But we'll come, I'll come back and open up a regular meeting and we'll have an action item. So with that said, I'm going to recess this meeting. Okay, everybody here? Going to go ahead and call us back into regular session. We have a single action item and it's to consider a motion to add one additional year to Superintendent Gordon's employment contract with the Roseburg Public Schools. The con, contract is a rolling three-year agreement currently set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
I so move.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to extend the contract one year to make it a rolling three-year agreement. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I.
I. Steve's eye, okay. It's six to zero. Director Shirkly is, I think is out of the country, maybe. I don't know, but we weren't able to get together with him. So I do have a statement to read. It is our honor and pleasure to announce the extension of Superintendent Stere Gordon's employment contract. Superintendent Gordon continues to lead our district with a student-first vision aligned to our strap plan. Under his guidance, our schools are becoming safer, more engaging and more effective teaching and learning environments for our community's children. I will adjourn this meeting.